Raise your right hand, follow after me. I, Wells Johnson, do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified according to the ordinances of the City of Isle of Palms to perform the duties of the position to which I have been selected and that I will, to the best of my abilities, discharge the duties thereof. So help me God. Welcome. I'm just a graduate of the City of Palms, was with us before as a beach service officer. Holy, we engaged, and he went this weekend. And he's still there. Very good. Thank you. Very good. Next in our hit parade, Joseph. Don't let them work you over. I'm not so painful. Raise your hand. I, Joseph Mullenix, do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified according to the ordinances of the City of Isle of Palms to perform the duties of the position to which I have been selected and that I will, to the best of my abilities, discharge the duties thereof. So help me God. Welcome. [Applause] Listen, Mount Pleasant is from Gatlin.
[Laughter]
Didn't get the picture? Gotta have your picture.
We have a camera over here that memorializes this event. You'll find it on our website somewhere. All right, Kay Hill. You know the drill. I, Kay Hill Lysman, do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified according to the ordinances of the City of Isle of Palms to perform the duties of the position to which I have been selected and that I will, to the best of my abilities, discharge the duties thereof. So help me God. Welcome. Also a graduate of our beach service. Welcome to the team. Holly is last but not least. He's our ladies man. I, Holly Horton, do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified according to the ordinances of the City of Isle of Palms to perform the duties of the position to which I have been selected and that I will, to the best of my abilities, discharge the duties thereof. So help me God. All right, welcome. Holly's been working at the rec center for quite a while now. He's permanent. Norman Jean had both phones on her. Thank you, one of all.
Bye, guys.
There they go. I wish they had stayed. Bring them back. While they're coming back, we'll go through the reading of previous meetings. We have in your package a regular meeting of April 23rd and a public hearing of May 21st. We have a motion to...
Second.
Approve. Motion seconded. Any discussion? None heard? All in favor, please say aye. All right, as they're coming back, I'm gonna make a motion that...well, I'm gonna wait till they come back. You don't have to sit down, just...I just... Is there any other others?
There we are.
We're up to...in our...oh, good, they're all...we're up to the part of our agenda where citizens can comment. I'm a citizen, so I'm gonna comment. I'm gonna comment on the fine work that our Public Safety Department did yesterday, both in the weekend, actually, not just yesterday. Both the Police Department and the Fire Department were exceptional in response to a, I think our city administrator termed it properly, a perfect storm. Between the weather, the tide conditions, and just everything, having miserable weather most of the spring, everybody got out of their homes and came to the beach this weekend. Getting them onto the island safely and getting them off the island safely was a major chore. Some didn't leave safely. We realized that there were numerous accidents, particularly on the connector, requiring personnel to be treated. We had to shut the connector down as a result to keep our people safe, which caused further heartburn throughout the island as people were logjammed. However, I think you all did a commendable job, a marvelous job, for the burden that was put on you, and I wanna publicly state that I'm so proud of you and everybody on the team. So, if you weren't working this weekend, well, you were all working.
Not you, we're the host.
If you know somebody that was working and isn't here tonight, please convey mine, and I'm certain everybody on council...
Yes, here it is.
It's not often...the chief just gave me the statistics on...and I haven't absorbed them all yet. I know Kim is waiting for me to digest them. But I do have last year's statistics, and we had 19,000 vehicles travel onto the island, and most of them traveled off also. And this year, when we're done, I'm expecting that we were up probably anywhere from 15 to 20 percent in just traffic flow. And then when you throw on it accidents on top of that, accidents with injuries, et cetera, it's a tremendous burden on our staffs, and we're dealing with it in communications with Mount Pleasant, the Sheriff's Department, the county, the state. We haven't gone to God yet. We're getting close.
We did that over the weekend.
But I appreciate all your work and the effort and the ability to maintain your composure under pressure, so thank you again.
Thank you.
Phew.
Did you give them the credit card for the pizza?
Yeah.
Well, I'm gonna send them. Well, you know, that'd have consumed it before they left the parking lot. I'll get them some pizza, but I need to get it to dispatch personnel. I mean, those folks just...I mean, if you don't realize that we have multiple...I see the chief, he knows your friend. At any one time, we have multiple children lost on the beach. At the same time, we have accidents, and we have fights, and we have all sorts of things going on when we have that many people that are visiting with us. I'd like to make a motion, I'd like to suspend citizens' comments for the moment, and make a motion that we move item 10 up on the agenda and deal with the proclamation now.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, this is a proclamation which I'm gonna read. Actually, I'm gonna have Patrick come up front. I know you're here.
That's good, too.
No, no, we're not gonna swear yet, but we're gonna...
You can work anything.
I'm gonna read this to you. Is everybody ready? A proclamation, whereas the Isle of Palms Exchange Club, a community service organization dedicated to making the Isle of Palms a better place to live through programs of service that promote Americanism, community service, youth activities, and its national project the preservation and prevention of child abuse, celebrated its 65th anniversary on April 24th, 2013. And, whereas the group of active citizens, the council members who work incorporated the City of Isle of Palms, also founded the Exchange Club three years before the city was incorporated. During this time, the Exchange Club provided essential services to the residents of the island, including mosquito control, staff with a first fire wagon, and sponsorship with the volunteer fire department. And, whereas the Exchange Club continued to contribute to civic activities, including white street signs, some of which are still in use on the island, sponsorship of the first church on the island, creation of a playground, and construction of an airport. And, whereas, in 1961, parent clubhouse for the Exchange Club was built on land donated by J.C. Long, an important figure on the island, and still providing meeting space for many essential community events. And whereas, the Isle of Palms Exchange Club still works in partnership with the city for many activities, including sponsorship of sports teams like baseball, soccer, football, and sponsorship of concessions at the end of Low Country Blues Band. And whereas, for the past 21 years, the Isle of Palms Exchange Club has worked in partnership with the Isle of Palms Department, the Mount Pleasant Exchange Club, the Town of Mount Pleasant, hosts the Isle of Palms Connector Run for the children, which has raised over half a million dollars to support agencies who work towards the prevention of child abuse, the primary mission of the Exchange Club. And, whereas each year, the Isle of Palms Exchange Club hosts an oyster rolls and provides proceeds, provide at least four college scholarships. 2012, the Exchange Club awarded Meeks Satelli scholarships in accepting the challenge of excellent awards and honored students as use of the month and use of the year. And, whereas the Exchange Club is an integral part of the collective memory, civic service, and social fabric of the City of Isle of Palms, its first president being Frank J. Satelli, a charter member being J.C. Long, and its current president being Patrick Carrington. So now, therefore be proclaimed or chaired in the City Council to hereby recognize and appreciate the value of the Exchange Club adds to the life of citizens, the life of the citizens of the Isle of Palms, and is grateful for your contributions, knowing that the club will continue to enrich island life for many years to come. Has a motion? Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. I hope you display that proudly in your newly appointed...
We definitely will. I'm really proud to represent a group of truly hardworking people, and we're proud to be part of the city.
All right, welcome.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you, all.
Good job.
Repeat that one more time?
I think there was a word as in somewhere.
These lawyers get on to this stuff. Sorry.
She's making a note, see?
Keep in count, huh? All right, citizens' comments. Any other citizens who wish to address council? Please. Ah, yes.
I'm Susan Haney. I live at 1426th Avenue, and I just wanted to ask City Council what the progress for a temporary market here on Isle of Palms, if we've made any progress with that. As you know, this past weekend, I mean, we're hostage over here, and to buy necessary grocery items, and, I mean, we need something set up for us.
Well, we have that on our agenda. Why don't we deal with it now, if we might...
Thank you.
All right, let's change the order of the agenda. We'll go to miscellaneous item number 11. Bring that forward, please. Motion seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, now it's your turn.
All right, I had had numerous conversations with Leonard Way, as well as the representatives of the Piggly Wiggly. They really worked hard and considered it very, very long and hard and looked at the numbers, and we gave them lots of options for possibilities at the current site, as well as alternative sites that might would exist on the island to accommodate a temporary store. But their final word was that they just did not think that they could make the numbers work, and that they, you know, hoped that everyone would be excited to embrace the new store when it got over here. But I think it's clear, had they seen the crowds this weekend, their opinions might have been different, because I think part of what contributed to our traffic problem was that beach visitors got over here to rent their house for a week, and it was only then that they realized that there was no grocery store, and so end of the day migration off to go to the grocery store, which, you know, contributed to more traffic on the road. But we really tried, and they seemed to give it, based on the dialogues that I had back and forth with them, it seemed like they gave it very serious consideration, but I was not successful with a temporary Newton Farms.
Okay, I mean, you started with the president to the pig, so that's serious, but not to be. Unfortunate.
I will mention that the Marina has started carrying a limited amount of fruits and vegetables. It's not near the selection you'd get in a supermarket, but if you absolutely need to get something, the Marina store does have some of that, some of the staples.
And I should also mention, just dovetailing with the comment that I made about the traffic, and this, of course, does not solve the problem of still needing a grocery store over here, but we did launch an effort today to communicate with all of those that we could in the rental property community to try to make sure that we begin to get the word out to people before they get on the island, that there is no longer a grocery store and they need to stop en route here, and to, in particular, not to make attempts to get off on weekends, because it's just too congested.
Any other citizen comments? Okay. Move on to our agenda. Reports of standing committees. Ways and Means Committee. We met on 21st of the month, 5:45. We heard from our treasurer, got a financial report for the 10 months of the year through, which is the 83 percent of our budget. Our current expenditures are running at 76 percent of budget, which is to the good. Our revenue is currently running at 81 percent, which is, again, close to being right on budget, but we're 106 percent on revenue over where we were this time last year, so we're still looking good there. Our payments are from the treasurer's office, indicates that our property tax will be met. We've collected...last year, they were very deficient, late in getting payments to us, and now they're more timely, and our treasurer is confident that we will collect our budgeted amount on property taxes. Our general fund cash is currently sitting at 2.8 million, which is 33 percent of our general fund expenses. Our goal is to always try and keep it at about 30 percent or above. Our tourism funding, municipal A-tax through April is running 9 percent over prior year. Our state A-tax, last year, we had an exceptional correction from a prior year, but we're running equal to what we were through March of this year, where we were this time last year. And our hospitality tax is now running 4 percent of both prior years. We went through a discussion of budgets, remaining budget items for FY14. We added $5,500 for more pooper scoopers. We added $15,000, excuse me, to the rec center. We approved kiosks, trying to acquire the used kiosks from Mount Pleasant, and that'll be an amount of $60,000. And we've opened up discussions, but have not gotten to any details yet. Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
And we had a discussion on the issue of affordable health care costs for those that work with the city that are not employees but work 30 hours a week. There was some concern that we may have to account for offering in health care under the Affordable Health Care Act. It's the deliberation of staff at this point that we're not going to amend our budget to include any funds for potential of having to account for health care for those that are 30 hours per week. So we're...hopefully that's the correct assessment, and we can get through the budget year before we go any further. Once we moved off of that, we moved on to new business, whereupon we took up issues and make a motion to approve $6,500 to civil site environmental for preliminary surveying and routing for drainage and problems remaining in the 56th and 56th Avenue bases, basin. I make that as a motion?
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion? None heard? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Second item was to approve $1,000 for civil site environmental to survey the Sparrow Drive drainage problem. This is an area that hasn't been dealt with in the past, and this is to do some preliminary engineering work. I'll make that as a motion?
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Award of a contract to Paragon Site Works Constructors Incorporated in the amount of $8,945 for improvement in the City Hall parking lot. I'll make that as a motion. I have a second.
Second.
Motion seconded. This is to put new bumper stops and new striping and to research this side of the City Hall, well, this area of City Hall. All right, any discussion? Motion seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard? Motion carries. Okay, thank you. Last item was the award of a contract to Lawns Done Right, an amount of $45,800 for an annual commitment, plus an estimated $4,000 for the repair of the front beach irrigation system. I'll make that as a motion?
Second.
Motion seconded. Discussion? None heard? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We took up an Intranet facet of the city for our employees to put all the departments and all the meaningful information that's intra to the city on the website that is secure, that is available to city employees, so they can access information, such things as minutes of meetings, such as this, and all the other important matters dealing with health insurance and things of that order. And that presentation went very well, and I think will be meaningful to certainly city staff, employees, and hopefully the rest of council can embrace it as well. So, I'm not sure everybody has signed on yet, but Emily will work you through if you haven't had any time. So, our next meeting is set for June 18th. That's the Ways and Means. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I think the Intranet is a great idea. If Chief Buchanan would help us with the budget, so we can get that on air sideways instead of perp and dickler, it'd be wonderful. It's a great job. Thank you.
Maybe a magnifying glass is probably the help.
I just have to look sideways.
Okay, moving on. Let's have a Public Safety Committee report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public Safety Committee met Monday, May 13th. All members were in attendance. Under old business, we discussed the rollout cart ordinance and did a little fine tuning on that you have in your packet, and we will be discussing that later when that comes on to the agenda. We also discussed beach access parking on 21st to 41st Avenue. Talked about things like would it be possible to maybe put a white line on the other side of the road. The Public Works Department uses that area with a pickup truck. I don't know if you've gotten behind the big truck on the seaboard side, you've noticed how that can back up traffic. They use a pickup truck on the inward island side. So at this time, we're gonna leave it like it is and see how it works, but we are trying to come up with some solutions to our parking opportunities, of which we have many. We reviewed the budgets for the Fire and Police Departments. We had a lady come and talk to us about considering a modification of the Isle of Palm Code that pertains to livestock, more specifically chickens. She's interested in perhaps having two or three chickens. We are still studying that, and we'll have to come to some kind of agreement on that We considered the dispatch agreement with Sullivan's Island. I would like to make a motion that we recommend the approval of the dispatch agreement between the City of Isle of Palms and Sullivan's Island as written.
Good. And I would ask Linda to explain that.
Okay. We have had an agreement with the town of Sullivan's Island for so, for some time, given our existing telecommunications component. We serve as their public safety answering point, and they, over the years, in our revenue budget, you'll see a line item that is revenue incoming based on that. As of July 1, and then again on October 1, the relationship having to do with serving as the public safety answering point changes somewhat. As of October 1, we will be, we're planning at that point to move to Consolidated Dispatch, and the Consolidated Dispatch Center will be the public safety answering point for both Sullivan's Island and Isle of Palms. Since we are the only PSAP, forgive me for using the initials there, Public Safety Answering Point, there is an expense for the city over a three-year period to make the move to Consolidated Dispatch. Over time, that expense disappears, but there's an initial expense. A portion of that expense that we are going to be paying to Consolidated Dispatch is part of the Sullivan's Island expense, so we need one agreement that obligates them to pay their portion of the Charleston County Consolidated Agreement, Consolidated Dispatch Agreement. Then, in tandem with the move to Consolidated Dispatch, the city has made the commitment to continue its operation of its own telecommunications, to do several things, to respond to the 10-minute hits, to basically listen to the first transition year of Consolidated Dispatch, and if they hear anything that might be going awry, they will, you know, get that corrected, and to answer the non-emergency phone lines for both Isle of Palms Police and Fire and Sullivan's Island Police and Fire 24/7. So we are also creating an agreement that obligates the Town of Sullivan's Island to their portion of that expense. And the agreement says they have been crafted, are the same numbers that are depicted in the budget as we have allocated things, so they tie back to the numbers in the budget, and are also based on the dialogues, the three-way dialogues that we have had with Consolidated Dispatch, Sullivan's Island, and the City of Isle of Palms. So we're hopeful, I will remind everyone once again, and we hope to get the word out to the public and to even do some training sessions, and on October 1, when we make that move to Consolidated Dispatch, when you call 911, the voice answering the phone is not going to be located on the island, and they are, the call taker is going to ask you a series of questions, and you need to calmly answer those questions in sequence. The more cooperative and calm and sequential that you are, the faster the response will be happening. At the same time as you're answering those questions, that call taker is volleying that information to a dispatcher. So help is on the way, and it seems like a lot of questions that don't relate, but they're required to ask those questions. Probably the most important piece of public information that we can convey, because for those of us who've already dialed 911 to Consolidated Dispatch a time or two, and we are trained, it does seem to be a bit of a frustrating experience. So just understand the call taker does not live over here, might have to ask you what's at front beach, or what beach, you know, more questions than you would think would be obvious.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the Consolidated Dispatch agreements. Any other discussion? All in favor? Michael?
How does the livability hotline come into play with this, since the calls will not be taken here? I mean, do they understand our livability hotline? They will be, you know, push those calls back to the island?
They will go to us. The livability...
911 goes to dispatch.
What about a noise complaint at 2:00 in the morning?
That goes to 911?
Okay, well, we also dispatch the livability hotline.
Right, we have, the livability hotline rings into our, into our offices, and will stay at that location. If someone calls 911 related to a noise complaint, let's say for example... If someone calls 911 related to a noise complaint, let's say for example, they hear someone screaming, and so they pick up the phone, dial 911, because they're not sure if it's a party or someone's in distress, that will go to Consolidated Dispatch. And then the help will be dispatched over here according to that response. But if someone calls the 8282 number, that is going to go into our facility over here.
And we'll have the capability of responding immediately to, say, Citadel Party or whatever the source of the complaint is?
Correct.
Yes, we do know.
The same police officer serves will be dispatched-
Both ways.
-who gets the call.
Okay, all right, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries, thank you.
We also discussed wellness activity at Public Safety Building and voted to approve that, and that is part of the budget. The city administrator gave a report on the meeting with SC DOT. She and the mayor met with Robert Clark as a prelude to a meeting between city council and a representative from SC DOT to discuss beach access parking, which is high on our list right now. Other items discussed with Mr. Clark were encroachments in the right-of-way, some maintenance issues, and regulation bike paths on both sides of Palm Boulevard from Breach Inlet to 57th Avenue. And Mayor Cronin indicated he would call a special meeting of council to discuss beach access parking with Mr. Clark. I think he probably also received a communication today from Stantec in which they're gonna meet with us individually and get our ideas and opinions on parking. We approved the Charleston, while we didn't approve, we listed the order of our county transportation committee request, and that is the 42nd to 57th Avenue drainage is our number one, cycling improvements on Palm Boulevard from Breach Inlet to 57th Avenue and our number three improvements to 14th Avenue as one enters and leaves the island. There were no contracts in excess of $10,000 to be considered. The fire department report during the month of April, fire department responded to 47 calls, 33 of which were EMS calls. Chief Graham said the Consolidated Dispatch call response report had several response times that were greater than 20 minutes, and they'll be doing some research and determining the cause of those delays. She pointed out that the fire department responded to fewer calls in April this year than they have for the same month in 10 years. That's a good thing. 15 fire inspections were performed, and over $2,000 in preventive maintenance was done in Engine 101, but expenses and maintenance still remain within budget. I know we're all gonna miss Battalion Chief Keeter. He's accepted the position of Battalion Chief for the Aldorf Fire District, and Captain Richard Hathaway has been appointed Battalion Chief filling the vacant position. Police Department report was given by Chief Buchanan. The meet and greet scheduled for April 21st was canceled at the last minute due to extremely heavy rain, I believe it was, and was rescheduled for May 9th and was well attended. Dispatches responded to 4,134 calls, of which 3,435 were for the police. 66 citations were written from 346 traffic stops, 128 incident reports were written. The city has experienced 17 burglaries year-to-date, three of which occurred in April. Six of the 13 arrests were for narcotics violations. From the livability report, she noted that there were 25 noise violations and one citation was issued. I'd like to stress again, lock your doors, lock your cars. We're in tour season, but that's, it's a good idea to get in the habit and do that year-long. There was also a meet and greet scheduled for May 16th at Morgan Cove in Yacht Harbor Cove, which I know they had. Next meeting is June 5th in the City Hall Conference Room at 5:00.
Any questions for public safety? All right, let's move on to public works, please.
Thanks, Mayor. The public works meeting met 5:30 on Monday, May 6th. Department report, director had indicated that the department had incurred nearly 16 hours of overtime due to pumping floodwaters from 46th through 49th Avenue in the second month in a row. Personnel did continue their beach sweeps twice during the month of April, and they also mowed down, mowed the riceway between 21st and 42nd Avenue. With the implementation of our single-stream recycling, impact of the volume is, continues to decrease. For a second consecutive month, garbage collection was down approximately 30 tons. But while the garbage collection is down, our yard debris collection is up, at a three-year record to 257 tons. Vehicle maintenance ran about $8,000 for the month, but still remains under budget year-to-date. Under old business, it was alluded to earlier, our problem spot that we have from the Phase 1 drainage project over at 56th Avenue, we're gonna continue to work on that and see what steps need to be taken to resolve those issues up in that way. Moving on to update on activities related to Sparrow Drive, again, long as they were out here doing surveying, it was cost-effective for us to go ahead and allocate the funds at that time, which we approved earlier, to figure out what we can do to alleviate some of the drainage problems that we have at Sparrow Drive as well. We had some discussion about deploying yellow barrels on the land side of Palm Boulevard last month. This month, we brought it up to the committee again with a cost. Director Pitts said he'd give it a try, has a trial run, he's gonna go ahead and have barrels placed at some of the higher access points, 25th, 28th, 34th, and 37th Avenue, in the cost of $140. We'll see how it works out, but it was $140 for all of them. We did have, as well as Public Safety had a discussion of the rollout cart, recycling cart ordinance, which will come up later. We had some discussion about the sign, our passport for 1801 Palm Boulevard. I think the staff had just been really overwhelmed with a lot of things that are going on, and we're continuing to work on that at the time. But there was a motion from our committee to rename that park. Since our meeting, that, they have decided not to move forward with that. So the idea of, we had a motion to name it the Carmarthen Bunch Park. Conversation with them have decided that they would not like that at this time, so...
Let me just comment, I talked to them today.
Okay, I was, I just wanted to make sure.
And they would be pleased to-
Okay, so it's changed back.
Yeah, there was some confusion.
There was some confusion, memory park, et cetera.
Correct.
Et cetera. It's not, they had that concept, we were talking about the park.
Correct, correct.
They didn't have that in mind.
Got it. So they, they do agree now? Because they called me last week.
As of, as of this afternoon, I talked to Carol Anne, and she was going to inform her mother.
Okay, because we were going, I was going back and forth with Morris Watson.
Correct.
You know, the last thing, she was really embarrassed when she called me, she said, well, I'm all, yeah.
Well, yeah, okay.
But it's everything's cool.
When it goes through too many, yes. So I talked to her directly, Carol Anne is, if, I'm gonna put this caveat, we have to do it right.
Right.
You know, if, if, when we get the cost from, you know, it becomes cost prohibitive, then I'm not gonna put it, certainly not gonna put her name on it. I don't know what name we put on it, probably nobody, but we do have that assigned, but we need to, we need to make it a park that we're pleased with, and that is, is good to put her name on it.
Correct, I agree.
And we don't have that date yet, but...
Okay, those different information that I was received. Perfect, then at that time, I would like to go ahead and make a motion that we rename it Mayor Carmarthen Bunch Park.
Seconded. Okay, motion seconded, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
By the way, her birthday is in August, she'll be 93.
Wow, that's great.
Good. New business, we had consideration of a resident's request to pipe a small portion of the ditch at 2408 Palm Boulevard. This is the ditch that's right next to our beach access pass at 25th. They wanted to do some, they need to get approval from us for our portion of that access area. We informed them that, and I told to their advisor, Kelly Messier, who's a landscaper at that, if the ditch were to be filled, or piped, then they would not be able to landscape out past their, and I think that was their, I looked at their landscape plan and made aware that, yes, was to pull that off. And I said that, you know, once this ditch does get piped, it's gonna allow for increased parking in that area, so. But the, we went ahead and made that motion to allow them to move forward with it.
With that caveat.
With that caveat, correct.
If I remember right, when that house was being built, their plan was to actually put vegetation into the, into the right, into the path, the beach access path there. It was something there.
That was, that was the other house, that was up-
The other one?
Yes, that was, that was our other, that was at 23rd Avenue, correct. So, but yes. Oh, I need to go ahead and make that in form of a motion then, to approve that request.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to, this is to pipe the ditch 2408 Palm. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Nay.
Nay.
And that one portion is, one portion of that property is already-
Already piped.
Piped, right.
Piped, I mean.
We moved on to award of, what we've discussed earlier with Paragon, to improve the parking lot in the City Hall. Also, we talked about and approved the bid for citywide landscaping. That was it for our meeting, we adjourned, and our next meeting is June 11th, 5:30.
All right, very good, thank you. Any questions for public works? Do we know, or is yard debris, is it, are we growing faster?
All that rain, maybe.
I don't know, it's just a bunch of-
Are people out in their yard doing it earlier than usual, or, I mean, have that much increase in yard debris?
Right.
I think we had a lot of weather that generated, a lot of wind and a lot of weather that generated a lot of debris.
I might make the observation that because of the rain we had, people were slower in getting their leaves out and getting them to the streets, which could have caused it for this month.
Okay, rec committee, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, a regular meeting of the rec committee was held May 1st with all members present. As with every month with the rec department, everything is busy and in full swing. We have softball, 3-on-3 basketball, 6-on-6 soccer, new for the rec center is a lacrosse program, several leagues of different age groups, 12 to 14-year-olds, 15 to 18-year-olds, and children as small as three to five years. And with that, of course, the parents in attendance are also learning the basic skills. The IOP beach run will be held Saturday, June 29th. There will be a 5K, 10K, and a youth fun run. Supporting the city's wellness initiative, city employees who want to participate will have their registration, registration fee waived. Summer athletic camps will begin the week of June 10th, and will include soccer, basketball, multi-sport, multi-sport camp, girls volleyball, girls lacrosse, volleyball clinic. Summer Camp Sunshine is full each, full each week. Programs continuing this summer are BOSSU Training, dog obedience, Pilates, senior aerobic, senior exercise, Taekwondo, as well as yoga and zumba, and the ever-popular zumba. Submissions for the photography contest, again, July 9, 11th, so get your pictures of life on the Isle Palms to the rec department, so again, July 11th, Friday. Being digital, it's easy to just ship them over on your computer. The 25th Annual Sand Sculpting Contest is coming up June 1st. For the first time, this event will have a full-page ad and piccolo spoleto program at no cost to the city, so we could probably figure there'll be an increased attendance, which means even more people coming to the beach, but a great thing, don't miss it. Under new business, the committee discussed the addition to the budget to offset the cost of city employees taking part in physical fitness training program called BOSSU. This is a class now offered to rec. As background, the city has encouraged its employees to take part in wellness classes as part of the employee wellness initiative. The cost of this participation has been absorbed by the rec department in the past. The fire department has enthusiastically embraced this program, and participation is almost 100%, and at this time, the rec department could not absorb that kind of cost without an additional funds being put in the budget. The issue here, from my point of view, is that the city's policy is to allow employees to take part in wellness activities at no cost to the employee. Now that they have embraced this training program and they're working in training to be better at their jobs, it's our responsibility to support, to support our own policy, which means paying for the instructor. We'll be talking about this later. Next meeting will be June 3rd, City Hall Conference Room.
Okay, very good. Any questions for rec? Let's move on to personnel committee, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Personnel Committee meeting was held on Tuesday, May 7th at 9:00 a.m. The amendments were approved unanimously approved, there were no citizens' comments. We reviewed the FY14 budget for general government and the building department. Administrator Tucker announced that this was the committee's final review of the FY14 budget. This version is the one that would be received, would receive first reading in the April council meeting. The general government budget has a seven-tenths of 1% increase over the FY13 budget. One of the factors in the increase is the printing of new hurricane stickers at $6,000. The stickers will be good for five years. As discussed at the Ways and Means Committee, the Kalia budget was reduced. On the capital budget, re-budgets from the current year are the signs. If they are installed by July 1st, they will come out of the FY14 budget. HVAC council chamber unit is included only if it, no, wait a minute here. The HVAC chamber is included only if it fails. The commuterized message boards and holiday light displays recommended by the ATAX committee are also in the capital budget with a generator replacement. The administrator announced that the Public Works Committee had approved proceedings with resurfacing the City Hall parking and replacing the parking stops. Also included in the work is removing 20 of the best parking stops from the City Hall lot and placing them at 1301 Palm Boulevard, and gravel is, and gravel to form an entrance apron at 13th Avenue into 1301 Palm. The contract award will go before the Ways and Committee meeting on May 21st. We asked about SCNG's work on 1301 Palm. Administrator reported that they will be working on the site through June. The administrator assured the chair that they will landscape around the box, but will not be done until their work is complete. The committee did not have any comments to make regarding the FY14 budget. Administrator Tucker reminded the committee that once the budget is passed, it will be the staff's work to plan for the coming year. There was no new business and no miscellaneous business. Our next meeting will be 9:00 a.m. Monday, we're taking June off, July 1st, 2013, in the conference room. Now, the sweepstakes winners for the general government are Laura McClellan, Police Department, Melissa Dawson, Public Works, John Graham, Fire Department, Tyler Richards.
Okay, any questions for personnel? Let's go on to Real Property, please.
Real Property met 5:30 Wednesday, May 8. Councilman Buchanan Stone, Administrator Tucker, Assistant Zubin, and City Clerk Cookland were present. Citizens' comments, none. Comments from Marina tenants, none. We had an update in old business on the activity for the tidal wave dock from John Schaefer. Both John Schaefer of Ocean and Coastal Consultants and Michael Pham, tidal wave water supports were present for this presentation. Mr. Schaefer distributed two conceptual drawings and the cost estimates for what they're proposing. Mr. Schaefer explained that the objective of this meeting- Mr. Schaffer explained that the objective of this meeting is to get conceptual approval so that the regulatory permit applications can be submitted by the end of the month, anticipating construction to begin in the off-season. The design was specific, specify infrastructure with an anticipated minimum service life of 20 years, improve the utility service to the dock, improve the safety of employees and customers, and improve the security of the site. Mr. Schaffer explained that alternates one and two are very similar, the difference being that alternate two, with alternate two is that it reuses and retrofits the existing floating dock. Alternate one will not require the removal of pilings and the disassembly of, or the disassembly of the floating dock as we may need to dredge, so it's a future cost savings. Mr. Pham commented that he has shown his design to the Marina manager and that Mr. Barrigan was very pleased with the design for both the long and the short-term plans for the Marina. At the bulkhead would be a security gate, probably aluminum, with an electronic keypad for secure access. To one side would be a staging platform that would possibly have a picnic table, but would provide a safe place for people to wait. Again, alternate two was not recommended by Mr. Schaffer and not necessarily the wave runners' preference. We asked questions about the floating system and if there was a value going forward with that, and it was explained that there probably is a market for that system, so that, that may offset some of what it may cost on the upside. We approved alternate one to begin the regulatory permit process. New business, consideration of contracts in excess of $10,000. There was none miscellaneous business. Marina rent update, all tenants are current with April's rents. We concluded the meeting at 6:18. Our next meeting will be July 1 at 5:30 in the conference room.
Very good.
That's my report.
Any questions for the Real Property Committee? Very good. Thank you. Let's move on. Reports in your possession from boards and commissions. You have accommodations tax, Board of Zoning Appeals and Planning Commission meeting minutes. Any questions or concerns on those minutes? None heard. Move on. We're up to, bills already in your possession. That's item A. This is second reading of ordinance 2013 dash 03, an ordinance amending Title III, Public Works, Chapter 2, Solid Waste, Section 3 dash 2 dash 8, garbage roll-out carts shall not be kept upon street or right-ofways. The City of Isle of Palms Code of Ordinances, county recycling containers from being kept upon street and road right-ofways except when placed for collection. So I'll make that motion for a second reading. Second. Motion in seconded. You have in your package an amended version of the first reading, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the amendments. You'll find that in your package is redlined, typed in red. It says revised pursuant to Public Safety Committee recommendations. And I guess I could read it for you, but I guess you, I'll read it, says, the original ordinance, and then what has been added is, and providing an exception, exception for garbage carts and recycling containers located on public-owned areas. I'll make the amendment as a form of a motion.
Second.
Motion in seconded. Any discussion on the amendments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
No.
Nay.
Three.
Four.
Four. Okay. Now, this motion is amended, is before us. Any discussion on the amended motion?
One question I have. It talks about the, what was it? I just have one question. It says, the city has a right to remove garbage carts and recycling containers placed in violation, and any violation is a cart that is visible from a street or right-ofway on private property now. So if this is, if somebody's, the very last sentence, says the city has a right to remove garbage carts and recycling containers placed in violation of this section, and then part of the section, it says, no garbage carts or recycling containers shall be allowed to be, remain clearly visible from a street, road, or right-ofway. And one of the things that had been brought up, our, our director in Public Works as well, is to say that a lot of the corner lots, people have the, it's hard to hide these. So the city would, this would give the city the right to go on that property and take that cart then, if it's behind their house and it's visible from one side of the street or the other? I just want to make sure that people are aware. So if people, so if people see Public Works or a police officer or somebody in their backyard taking their garbage can, I just want to make sure that they're aware of it.
Mr. Mayor.
That was, that was a question, that was, I was just asking the mayor. That was a question for the mayor.
Well, that is, that is the existing ordinance. That's not a change from what we've had for 20 years.
Well, it did change the fact that, I just want to make sure.
Yeah. Well, we discussed the public safety was the fact that we have a lot of folks with corrals and other matters that allow recycling and our waste carts to be visible all over the island, and that we ought to deal with separately the issue of corrals and visibility, et cetera. So, that's an item that the council and I would hope Public Works could take up in a future date.
Yeah, Public Works talked about, I just wanted, I just wanted to make sure that this, but this allows the city to go and remove any cart that's visible from a public right-ofway, no matter where it sits on a person's property.
That's what it says.
That is not a change.
I mean, this is, has been on the books for some time. In fact, Councilman, you voted for this two other occasions on City Council.
Which days were those?
This is back in the 2000s, so, you know, last decade, when you were, so there were a number of amendments made to the thing, but there's two, the last two times this came up before council, and I wasn't a member of council, but doing some homework, you voted for this exact wording.
No, I think if you read the record, I voted against it, but if you go back.
No, if you look at the record, you, the entire council.
You can check the record at some other date. That's not a.
My, 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 this second comment would be that I would very much think it's within the scope of the Public Works Committee to rewrite the section of this ordinance that has not been changed on this amendment.
Okay. If they see fit.
If they see fit.
Mr. Mayor, I hear, you know, Councilman Battelli say that the Public Works Committee did not favor this in the beginning, so, I mean, this came under public safety, and it just, it seems like we've gone to Public Works once and then twice, and now it's come through public safety, so we're just kind of going around the block to get to this point.
I, I'm, I'm a little bit confused as to what you're.
Well, what I'm saying is I.
Are you referring to the city's right to remove garbage?
Well, yes, sir, I am. I'm referring to.
So you did, you, the Public Works chose not to do it with that, that particular point?
Yes, sir. That's, that's my point in front of me.
So, so Public Works doesn't object, so they don't object now?
Well, they recommended not going forward with this. There was a vote for, I think, two years in a row on that. I was on one of those votes, and I think the second year it was voted down, but I think this came up through public safety on this.
But, the, that has to do with the county carts, not the fact of rights to remove garbage carts. That was never told.
It's all going back to one direction.
And, and I would, I would say, you know, the, the meat of this ordinance change is to keep the island looking clean and camped. The whole point of what we're doing right now is not to be looking for cans that you can see from driveways or from the sea, street. The changes in this affect the blue Charleston County recycle cans. I think we should only think that if we're going to not want our green trash cans out in the street for days at a time, why would we want the even more highly visible blue cans left out in the street? Let's, let's keep this island look like, looking like we want it to look nice.
Okay. Comments, Jimmy?
Has anyone called City Hall or Public Works asking Public Works Department or City Hall to come pick out the blue cans as a result of this impending ordinance?
I mean, they're turning in their blue cans because they didn't want to take ours, but they wouldn't call us.
Well, not since this ordinance has been pending, but right after the service started and the, and the cans were distributed, we did have one owner of rental property who requested that we, we facilitate the removal of the roll cans from their rental properties because they said they were having trouble with their renters not using the cans properly. And it was, and it was causing them a problem because they were having to sort through what was put in them, and so they just did not want to offer that. But that was all prior to this ordinance consideration. And we facilitated that change for, for that property owner, but I don't, at least to my knowledge, there hasn't been anybody, and Donnie and Emily are shaking their heads, that have done it since we started deliberating this. But it has been done.
Okay. Now, the subjects, all in favor of the motion on the table, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
One, two, three, four. All right. Motion carries. We're up to ordinance 2013 dash 04. This is second reading of ordinance, amending Title VII, Licensing Regulations, Chapter 1, Business Licenses, Article A, General Provision, City of Isle of Palms Code of Ordinances, to change the due date for business license fees from January 1st to April 1st, and to change the corresponding delinquency date from February 1st to May 1st of each year. I'll make that a motion and suspend the reading of the ordinance.
Second.
Motion in seconded. Any discussion on this point? Michael?
During processing discussions, I, I injected to the cost of this, to the city of 5,000, estimated to be $5,000. I just feel that, you know, considering other, for our budget and other needs, that that $5,000 could be used in a better process example for reserve for beach restoration or for our other reserves. So I'm, I'm not voting in favor of this.
Okay. Any other comments?
When is the effective date? When you sign this in?
Uh huh.
Okay.
When we pass it, basically. All right. Any other questions, concerns? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Two noes. Shoot, the ordinance, second reading, 2013 dash 05, an ordinance to raise revenue and adopt a budget for the City of Isle of Palms, South Carolina, for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2013, through June 30th, 2014. Seems like these years have plied them.
They are.
All right. We're going to suspend the reading of the budget in detail. I'll make that as a statement, but, um, does the administrator just touch the high points?
Okay, we'll be glad to. The differences in this version of the budget versus the last version that this committee saw and the version that was presented at public hearing, is that we have added in the $15,000 to accommodate the employee wellness, and that is added into the instructor expense on the recreation committee's budget. We added $5,500 for additional pooper scoopers, and then we added funds in all of the appropriate places in municipal accommodations fee to accommodate the purchase of the used Mount Pleasant parking kiosk and putting those into operation. Of the other items that we discussed that are not included in here, the affordable health care, as the mayor mentioned, at this point, we've satisfied ourselves that it would be appropriate to go ahead and pass this budget without that in there. Happy to report that it is, is a budget that does not contemplate any property tax increase, and it is a first-time budget for beginning to set aside funds so that we are able to get away from borrowing money. So we're setting aside funds to make our long-term capital purchases, and so this budget contemplates doing that as well.
Okay. We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded. Any discussion, Jimmy?
Um, during this process, we talked about there, there will be a number provided for the increase in the Disaster Recovery Reserve Fund, and I was wondering, is there an estimate of that number? You had stated to me that.
Well, when we get finished this fiscal year, we will have a surplus. Would be my hope that we could add $100, $150,000 to the disaster reserve fund, out of that surplus coming out of this fiscal year.
Okay. Well, that's wonderful, but I'm, I don't think it's nearly enough. Just wanted to go on the record and say that. I've contemplated long and hard about making some motions, but I know where the budget's going to end up. I just want to reiterate a couple of points that are concerned to me, that the city has still has over $13 million in general obligation bonds and banknotes. This year, coming up, we're paying $513,000 in interest plus, just interest only servicing those notes. That really concerns me. We're spending more than we're taking in on our, our, our tourism-related funds. My comments are, were printed in detail on page four of nine of Ways and Means Committee meeting of May 21st of this year. And, um, this, this is my sixth budget session. I was four from a long time ago, but, um, it's the shortest budget work, workshop and discussion that this full council has sat on. I'm not talking about the committee, I'm talking about the full council, that I can ever remember by a long, long shot. We spent four hours and 43 minutes on this budget, and I think that the budget needed a lot more discussion. I didn't feel like there was much willing from some people to discuss it a whole lot. And so, these are just my observations, and I'm just saying that I appreciate your time, but I can't support it.
Okay. Thank you. Any comments, concerns?
What is the regulations with public notice again, going through, and is it not altered enough that we have to have another public hearing on this?
If we had taken an action that would have changed whether or not there was going to be a millage, a change to the millage, then definitely we would want to go through the public notification process again concerning the budget. The changes that we have made to the budget have not affected the, you know, the millage in any way, so I don't feel like that it's enough to warrant going through the process. Again, certainly we can do it if that's the will of council, if you would feel more comfortable. I think all of the things that we did after the public hearing were items that were also discussed at that public hearing, so there was awareness that these possibility for changes would occur. If we had had to make significant adjustments related to compliance with the Affordable Health Care Act, and that had had an impact on the operating funds, then I would have strongly encouraged that we repeat the public hearing process and, and all of that associated requirement.
Okay. All right. All in favor of the budget as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Two noes.
Nay.
Okay. Moving on to ordinance. Second reading ordinance 2013 dash 6, an ordinance amending Title VI, Health and Sanitation, Chapter 2, Animals, Article B, Dogs. The City of Isle of Palms Code of Ordinances, to extend the hours of dogs, that dogs are permitted large on the beach during the period of April 1st through September 14th of each year. I'll make that as a motion and suspend reading of the ordinance. Motion. Motion seconded. This gives dog lovers an extra hour to have their dogs off the leash during the summer period. If we have complaints, if there are problems as a consequence of this, we'll bring it back again. Michael?
I have probably talked to two dozen dog owners on the beach, walking their dogs...
I saw you talked to two dozen dogs.
Well, and every single one was extremely enthusiastic and was really appreciative that the city's considering this, so it's... We may have some distractors, but I think anyone who loves our furry friends are going to be in support of it.
Any other discussion on 13-06? Can we discuss in 13-06? Okay, very good. All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
They were planning that.
Mayor is going to the dogs down there.
Somebody had to say that. All right, we're done with the ordinances. We've done our proclamation. We've done with miscellaneous business.
No, we're not.
We're not done with miscellaneous.
We're going to bring something up in the light of all what's happened in this weekend in regards to traffic. As everyone knows, the City of Isle of Palms supported Charleston County of extending the connector, at the bottom of the connector, on Mount Pleasant Side to 17 to 4 lanes. That project originally was scheduled to be completed prior to this season. Unfortunately, Charleston County put other projects in place of it. Speaking with members of Charleston County, there is a meeting this Thursday, which the Finance Committee will be reviewing this, and I think it would be, just to, you know, reiterate what we're trying to do, and as far as, because I think a lot of it is just infrastructure, have the roads to take the numbers off the island in a timely manner, and especially from a public safety standpoint, that I'd like to make a motion that the city sends a message to Charleston County from our council that we are very in favor of this, and we want their 100% of their support on this upgrading this, so this is approaching to be done next year. I'd like to make that a motion.
Motion and seconded. Any discussion? I'll discuss. I mean, this is, we've already been in touch with the county today, but today in particular, of course. It is on the schedule, it's up for funding. If, like a paraphrase, if it's funded, usually they always fund these, by the way, but if it is funded, the work will commence in the fall. We've told them we don't want them to come over and start work on rifle range during the summer, but I think that was an option they were considering. They would contract it early summer, and work would start after Labor Day. So hopefully, they've got the message from what you've received and what we've received today, and we have a motion, and we'll amplify it when we send this communication back to them also. So any other discussion?
If I may. In the meantime, is there any way that it could be perhaps orchestrated, coordinated, and dealt with so that the center lane of the connector is opened up for traffic?
We've considered that in advance. And that's you? Again, I'm playing, I have no cards here, so I don't know where my facts are. I believe, based on what the chief told me, part of the problem this weekend was the light at rifle range. Not only is it always pacing, it was not timed properly. So the timing has to be managed, but we've also been in touch with Mount Pleasant Police and the county sheriffs, and it would surprise me greatly if it's not manned here shortly, either as we dictate or every weekend. I don't know which place.
I was on that road in the sequence. Three cars got through, and then the light changed.
That's not, you know, what we picked up for just this evening.
And if I could add, when we looked at possibilities of changing the way the connector was set up, probably last year, one of the reasons we decided not to do anything was because the middle lane is critical for any emergency vehicles that may need to get on or off of the island during this traffic backups. I know it's something we have to contend with, but I sure want to feel secure in knowing that should EMS need to get out to the island, if they're not already here at the fire station or public safety building, that they have a lane available to them to make it out to the island and get back. Okay. All in favor of the motion? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good.
Just a reminder, Marie has asked me to remind you all that you've received information from the Municipal Association of South Carolina related to their annual meeting, which is in Greenville this year, and we need to get the information back from you all about whether or not you plan to attend, because we need to respond to them by June 5th, I believe it is.
Particularly if you're not going to go, when you're going one way or the other, please let me know, so that I won't be looking for something in front of you when you're not going to go.
They may tell you as they walk out tonight.
Yeah.
Right, any other subjects? Move for adjournment?
So move.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We're out of here. Thank you all for listening to us. Norma Jean?
I know. You almost, you almost did it.
I don't have it committed to me.
I know. That's what I've been agreeing to.